I'm going to call to order this meeting of the design review board for the city of Litchfield Park. Would you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Before we start our agenda items, there's always a call to the community for anyone who would wish to address this board. On anything that any topic is not an agenda on tonight's meeting. Is there any request to speak? No?
Yes.
On a non-agenda?
Non-agenda.
Okay, could you please, is it? Are you standing? Okay. So just give your name and address for the record.
I am the chairperson, members of the board. My name is Stanley Drauz. I live at 570 North Bahara Way. My neighbor, Marsha Franco, who maybe show up late, and I occupy the two residences. At the top of the cul-de-sac north of the Wigwam Maintenance Yard, the golf course maintenance yard. That's the issue I wish to address. Golf course has been through four owners since I've been here. How it all happened is really a good discussion for a topic, a topic for a discussion, but it's not for today. Until this week, the maintenance yard has had an old building right on the property line next to our homes. Because the land involved is dissimilar in use, that building was buffered by a land of oleander. And it was very nice. I bought my house in nineteen eighty-eight because of the backyard. That's how nice it was. I didn't even know there was a maintenance yard behind me. Over time, both the building and the buffer were allowed to fall into disrepair. An item of concern that affected the tranquility of the neighborhood as well as the value of my property. But it gets worse. Recently, twenty fourteen, twenty eighteen, and twenty twenty-three during the monsoon. Sections of that building have been torn off and tossed onto our property. At considerable damage and cost to repair. Insurance calls it an act of God, and it covers the damage. But three times. At the most recent storm last August, we began to ask the city to look into what provisions the owner was taking to secure the building and attend to the buffer. We didn't wish a conflict, we just wanted the information. The buffer has been attended to. It's been virtually eliminated. There is no effective buffer between my property and the maintenance yard. Currently, the building is being demolished. We now have an unobstructed view into what can only be called an industrial area directly next to our property. I don't believe that we asked for anything excessive. As little had been done to the building since the last storm. But with the monsoon approaching, we wanted to know what was going to be done to eliminate the threat to the neighborhood and our property. Instead, things are drastically changing. Changes that will affect how we enjoy our backyard as well as the overall property value. And we are last to find out what happens. And I don't think that's fair. It's not the Litchfield Park way. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. And just note the staff will take appropriate steps, so we can't, we can't comment or take any action tonight. Thank you.
I don't know if there's any other speaker cards, Chair, besides Stanley?
There is no other request to speak. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay.
Okay.
So we'll move forward with our agenda items. It says a response to the call to the community. It's the directing staff to figure out what, what the, what if anything our board can do to, to help out.
We know the speaker. I've been in his backyard and know the other two households that are represented tonight. I gave an update to council last month, the city manager did, and then I, after Matthew Williams presented the maintenance yard issue, then I got up at the podium. Provided some further detail to council about. This has been a lingering issue as the speaker commented on, so we'll, we'll take the appropriate action to follow up.
Okay, thank you. First up is approval of the minutes. You'd like to motion? Take a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next up is a new covered patio at two seventy-one Bahia Lane East. I'll have our city staff, Mr. Pro, present the case, and then is applicant present?
Yeah.
Okay. And then you can, you can give a response or come up and give your name and, and help us out if we have any questions.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the design review board, thanks for being here tonight. So we have three different projects tonight. You'll remember this one from last month. Unfortunately, we, we didn't have anybody from the applicant representing the owner, so the board didn't, did not want to take action that night. So we're back this time with full representation on the project. So this is two seventy-one Bahia Lane East. It's just south and east of where we're meeting tonight. The applicant's looking to do a patio cover on the front of the house, about fifteen by fifteen. House is an existing townhome, and the patio would be about two hundred and twenty-five square feet. The house faces east-west, and the shade cover would provide basically protection from the elements if you were on the west side of the facility. As I mentioned, we had the setup for March seventh, DRB. It was continued. We wanted to put this item on first on the agenda to have the DRB act on it. According to records from Eric Pope County, the house was built in nineteen seventy-two, and the lot is occupied by a home, a single-story home, about sixteen hundred square feet. And as I mentioned, the addition of the patio cover would be a little over two hundred feet, square feet. This is part of the Litchfield Park subdivision number fifteen, unit two. It's lot number two sixty-seven, and it's zoned RC or residential cluster. Development standards for this neighborhood is a ten-foot setback. And the patio cover would meet this with an overhang of three feet, which is allowed by both the zoning code as well as our building official. And lot coverage proposes a little less than fifty-one percent, whereas the RC zoning allows sixty percent. Here's a vicinity map. So Bahia Lane is the north-south street. Neighborhood is located just north of Tierra Verde Lake. Here's an aerial photo. There's a multi-use path that DRB may be familiar with on the east side of this particular neighborhood, providing the connection between the school and the lake area and that portion of the city. So again, it's the third lot north of the lake. Here's a plot plan. DRB asked for additional materials, a little bit more detailed than we had for you in March. So we've worked with the applicant Eric Booth to get a little bit more detail on the project. So this is a plot plan. The shaded area on the left would be the lattice cover. I've tried using my laser pointer on these screens. For whatever reason, it doesn't work. So if I need to point, I can get up and point on the screen, do it old school. This is a patio cover and plan view. The area in blue is the privacy panel that DRB asked for more details. So we went back, talked to the applicant last month, and we have a little bit more detail for the, the board tonight. This is a front elevation, so that's basically facing east towards the, the home. This is the privacy panel, so the, the drawing on the left or the exhibit is a, is a elevation of it, if you will, and then the image that Eric provided is an actual application of how this has been used elsewhere and in the valley. So that provides a visual of how it's been then implemented on, on other projects. We did not have this level of detail at the March meeting. Background and analysis, as I said, this would provide, the lattice cover would provide some shade to the, the owner of the, of the property. We feel it ties in nicely, the lattice cover with the, the rest of the project. You might remember that at your January fourth DRB meeting, you approved, the board approved, a very similar lattice on a home about four or five lots north of this, same side of the street, east side of the street. That product's been completed, it looks really nice. And so this would be very similar to what DRB has seen before. We're doing things a little bit different on the staff reports and the recommendation. I've been working with the city clerk's office since our last meeting. We use a program called Agenda Quick for our materials. And so to be consistent with the way we do things with city council, we're trying things a little bit differently this time moving forward. So we've got a recommended motion that'll be part of, it'll be on future, in the staff report and future staff reports. And then we'll also have a staff recommendation, basically the same information. So if the recommended motion, it would be for, if you're comfortable with, the project would be for one of you to move to approve the application subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant and the following stipulations. And then the staff recommendation, which is also in your, in your staff report, is basically the same stipulations, a little bit different wording. We are recommending approval. We think the project is appropriate. Fits in nicely. This particular neighborhood, it has a mix of architectural styles in terms of roof patterns. Some, some of the houses like the, the applicants here, it's a parapet-style roof. Others up and down the street, and some of the other streets have kind of a mansard roof with tiles, so it's a little bit of a mix depending on which product got built originally. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We do have the owner and the applicant here tonight as well.
Okay. Would applicant like to come in with your name and for the record?
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Padgwick, and I live at two seven-one Bahia Lane East in Litchfield Park. We've been here for, we've been there for since nineteen ninety-nine. And the, you know, the sun comes out, and it's a west-facing front house, and the sun comes in the two big windows, and we'd like to, you know, it's an, we have, we put pavers in the front. It's a lovely sitting area, but we'd like to, you know, provide ourselves with more shade and a little more privacy.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Do any of the board members have any questions? The only thing I had concern with last time was that privacy screen, and it just, because it's like it's creating a solid wall in an area that's is in the front setback area. So that was the only thing that I had reservations about. And then also, if your neighboring property has any landscape there, that's going to effectively shade it from all sunshine for a lot of the, at least the winter months, so.
Well, the, um, our neighbor has four, five vehicles in the front of their house in the driveway. There are two trashcans that in front of their garage all the time. They have a trailer. They had logs in the front of their yard. The weeds are growing up. Part of the reason that we, we really wanted the privacy fence. I wish I could say something different, but.
I get it. Any other?
That.
I'm, I'm just curious, because I think, I was trying to think about, if they can come into that anyway, they could essentially by zoning code, they would, would be allowed to even the wall there, right?
Yeah, a solid wall would not be permitted outside.
This is our contract.
I know. I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
Yeah, what is the limit of? I know, that's, that's what we're, that's our reservation, is that visually, it's a solid wall. For all intents and purposes, it's a solid wall. Structurally, it's, you know, it's not, I mean, although it is substantial. So, I mean, that was our only, that was my only reservation, is that we're getting into putting solid pieces of structure in the setback area, whereas like a, an open lattice work or something.
Well, it is, so it's.
Could you, could you give your name?
Oh, yeah.
For the record, thank you.
My name's Eric Booth. I'm a contractor for them. So it will be, the, the wall, it's, it's, it's space lattice is what it is. It's basically the same as what the roof will be. And it's on the side in between the post and the house. So it's not, it's not going along the front.
Yeah.
I thought you mentioned, I thought, you said something.
Even like a solid landscape wall would not be permitted there, so.
Okay. So.
That, I'm just bringing that up because that was my only concern and reservation. If, if I'll let everyone else.
The house sits, what, six doors north? Is it the same layout as what you're proposing here?
Through the chair, Commissioner Derry. Correct. So just to provide a little bit of clarification, so the, the home to the north that you approved back in January has a very similar patio cover. It does not have a privacy screen. This is the ten-foot setback, so technically the privacy screen is located outside of the required building setback.
You mean within, within the setback? Or I mean, within the building allowable?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, that's fine then. All right. Any other questions or concerns for staff or applicant? Could I make a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion. I move that we approve the application and we accept the staff recommendations as part of it.
Or you can just.
Yeah, I see.
So we'll accept the recommended motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, we'll motion a second. Any further discussion? Are you in all favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay. Next up is a new garage. For, located at three hundred West Allegory. Maybe the applicant present for it? Okay, thank you. But again, I'll staff over, give an overview.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the design review board. So this is a another residential project. It's located at three hundred West Allegory Drive. It's a corner lot, just north of, on a, north of Litchfield Square. Applicants requesting DRB approval for a third-car garage. It would be attached to an existing two-car garage. The garage addition would be about two hundred and fifty square feet, more or less. Little bit on the property specifics, it's located in the Litchfield Park subdivision number seventeen, unit one. We've got to toggle over the maps a little bit, just to give you some context. So here it is. The, the main street to the west is, just to provide some context, is, is Litchfield Road before it makes the curve up to Camelback. The green space is the Wigwam and the golf courses. Here's an aerial photo. You can see Scout Park to the south and the parking lot for Reds and the, the club to the southeast of the site.
Can you zoom in on that aerial?
Yes. I'm gonna have to take it out of presentation, so let me.
Okay, finish presentation, and then we can come back to it.
That's fine. But yeah, I can zoom into it. This is lot number twenty-four. It's on R one fifteen. It's a little bit different zoning category than the prior case. The lot's about sixteen thousand six hundred square feet, and the existing home, single-story, is roughly twenty-two hundred square feet. As I indicated, the garage would be attached to the existing two-car garage and both the, it's a side-entry garage on the corner. So both the existing proposed garage would face Lolloma Avenue. According to county records, the house is built in nineteen seventy-three, and much like the rest of the house, the garage addition would include a stucco finish and a flat roof line. Building materials would basically match the house. We'll come back. We'll blow up the aerial photo in a minute. This is a plot plan. It's a little bit hard to read. The garage addition itself, you can see is the darker, the gray area. That's the plot plan. So Lolloma is this north-south street to the east, and then Allegory east-west is cul-de-sac to the south. This is a floor plan, so you can see the, the garage addition. This is a facade, front elevation. You'll notice the drawings show two different garage doors. I talked to the applicant Kyle, who's here tonight. Typically, we would want the garage doors to match, and he indicated, I won't, I'll let him speak to that, but basically both garage doors will match the final product, final design. Background and analysis, if the garage is approved, it just provides a little bit more room for the owner, protect that space from the elements. We feel that the garage is appropriate. Given the stipulations that we're proposing, we feel like the design would fit in with the home and fit in nicely with, with neighborhood. Same thing as the last case. We're trying a couple of things differently with our formatting, so there'd be a recommended motion for the board to consider, and then staff recommendation would be for approval subject to two stipulations. And with that, I can pull this out of presentation mode and, and zoom in on the aerial if you'd like.
Actually, the, oh, it's Lolloma.
Yeah, I just need to advance this, this line. Is that about what you were looking for, Commissioner?
Yeah. So how wide is that garage going to be? Physically, the addition.
Chairperson, Commissioner Derry, I think I'm going to defer to the applicant. He's got a full-size set of plans.
Oh, okay.
Give you the demotions.
The reason I ask is because of the angle, and when I drove by it today, looking at it, and the other thing is, so you're ready to change your whole gas service and your electric service? Because they're sitting right on that corner of the building, and unless you're sitting back behind it, you're having to move, you're having to move it all.
Sure, please stand it and give your name.
Sure.
My name's Kyle Henley with Henley's Floor and Home Post. Thank you for having me. But yes, what's not, you can't really see on the set of plans, is at some point during this, this home's life, somebody added a, an addition onto it already, and it's subpar quality, and it's not to code. It's got Rolex hanging inside. That is existing, and it's shown on a plan that's existing, but that's coming home. We're demoing that. So we're actually not sticking on fifteen feet onto what you see on that site plan, that, that eleven feet is coming off of that, and then we're attaching to that house. So the, the, the gas is going to be unaffected out front. The SCS, the service entrance section of the electric panel, is actually on the garage side, existing garage site now, so that's not going to be affected as well.
Okay, the, the new garage is actually going to be offset.
Yes, sir.
It is. And it makes perfect sense.
Yeah, and you know, the set of plans showed it, and that's like, when you can barely see it, there's a, there's a shantilly-built additions that's going to be removed and put in the dump where it needs to be. And as far as the, the garage door, of course, I printed out a nice paper one. We just installed, well, they just had that garage door installed. Very nice garage door.
Thanks.
Same company is going to install the same manufactured door, just smaller on this one. And if you, if I have to redo the plans to show that, we will, but this, this architect, he, he charges five hundred dollars, and he didn't change whatsoever. So try not to, to, um.
I, I think the note in our acceptance, I'd be willing to accept that because we've done that in the past. You know, say, everything's going to match.
A stipulation to the motion.
Another item I'd like to address, because I read before I came, I read your staff recommendations. I want to talk about structural calculations that you're requesting to, for the pool to be unaffected. Our closest point to the pool is that corner, and it's going to be just over nine feet to the pool. So we're not even within the five feet that typically we're allowed to be from house to pool. So I just want to know if we, I, I hate to twenty-five hundred dollars is a minimum for a structural engineer. That's almost ten percent of this project. And I just hate for Mr. and Mrs. Little to have to bear that expense when we're under eight feet in plate height of the building. You know, really no reason to have structural.
Is that part of the motion? Or recommended?
Yeah, we could strike.
That doesn't usually affect the design review anyway. That would be part of building safety.
Yeah. Yeah, we could strike that second sentence that begins with structural.
So what I'll do on the site plan is I'll go through there and, and mark measurements, everything for you. And I know utilities, everything through there, and get all that done. But if we could avoid the structural calculations, I mean, that'd be great for them.
We can't promise that because we're a different thing than building safety. So all we can do is not put it in our motion.
Understood.
Any other questions for staff or applicant? The building materials are going to match existing. Roof material is going to match existing.
We're actually gonna, we're changing planes. There's a, there's a front parapet wall that goes up at the masonry top. The garage comes in at a certain height, and it goes that, and we're going to go, we're going to look just like the house garage.
Is there an elevation?
There should.
It's kind of hard to see, but you can, the top image.
Yeah, we're keeping those plates the same.
I'm not sure if it's to scale perfectly.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, my, yeah, I always, I had my, my, but it was dead. Okay, so.
Oh, I'll make a motion. That we approve the, yes, thank you, the new garage at three hundred West Allegory Drive, subject to the recommended motion, number one, that the garage doors match existing. And recommendation number two, in as much as it applies to the DRB, so not including the structural engineering calculations.
I'll second that.
The motion and a second. Any further discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
What, just for clarification for the board and for the applicant, what happens the next day is tomorrow, I'll prepare like a one-page summary sheet with what action you took tonight. And I will strike that sentence, and then what happens with that sheet? I take it over across the hallway to building safety, and I'll send that to you as well as the applicant, and then there's a record on what the board approved.
Okay.
Yeah.
We just, we're not telling building safety how to do their job. We just, it's not part of our purview.
That's okay, where do you ask?
Okay, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And next up, a new single-family residential home at four thirteen East Bird Lane.
Thank you, Chair. This is a.
Okay. When he's finished here, someone can come up and speak for your project.
Thank you, Chair. This is four thirteen East Bird Lane. The applicant's requesting DRB approval for a new single-family residential home. The components of what's proposed on the improvements are up on the screen, so the total livable area would be roughly sixty-five hundred square feet. Total non-livable, about twenty-one hundred and sixty feet, square feet. Total exterior covered, outdoor patios, et cetera, porches would be a little more than fifteen hundred square feet, and so that brings the total under roof to roughly two, ten thousand two hundred square feet. Little bit of background on the, the site itself. So the property is located in the Litchfield Park subdivision nine. It's lot two hundred. Um, a little bit of background on the the site itself, so the property is located in the Litchfield Park subdivision nine, it's lot two hundred. And it's owned RE, the residential estate. The RE has a building envelope consisting of forty-foot front and rear yards, thirty-foot side yards. And the subdivision plan was approved in nineteen sixty-three. As you'll recall from prior applications elsewhere in the city. We were incorporated in nineteen eighty-seven as a city, so there's some non-conformity. And legal non-conforming. Uh, components that come into play occasionally and. On different projects that we bring forward, this would be one of those. Um, so historically on in the RE district, the side yard setbacks are fifteen feet. Um, on each side of the home. The lot coverage uh, proposed uh, for this particular project is about twenty-six point four percent. The RE zoning allows up to thirty feet. Uh, it is a one-story home, this proposed, the heights roughly twenty-four, twenty-four feet. Uh, the RE zoning does allow two-story homes up to thirty-five feet. Uh, here's a vicinity map, whoops. Um, so we're just below Camelback. Uh, west of Dice Art, um, this is Bird Lane. Here's an aerial photo of the site. You can see this is the last remaining vacant uh, lot on Bird Lane. Uh, some design components, um. The architectural design is considered a modern French country style. It uh, proposes both the stucco smooth uh, stucco exterior. There's some metal fascia trim uh, components for accents. Along with stone. And those are found throughout the design of the home. We've got some really good exhibits that the architect provided for us. Uh, the roof would be a slate and wooden garage doors uh, are proposed. There are two separate two-car garages. They flank each other on uh, an auto court, if you will. Um, off of uh. The the main uh. Uh, front portion of the home, off the front door. A little bit of uh, here's a topographic survey. You can see the site's vacant. Uh, the plot plan, so the dark area, it would be hardscape. So one driveway off of Bird Lane, there's guest parking. Here. And then the auto court, if you will, these are the two two-car garages that face each other.
Zoom your.
Yes.
Screen.
I need to get out of presentation for some reason, but. To do that.
I looked at it before, right?
It's just like. Relation, I don't know, it's just the one packet that I downloaded.
From theirs.
Yeah.
There were two ones you see.
Yeah.
Very, when I zoom like that, no, let me zoom out a little bit.
There you go.
Uh, there's a swimming pool off the very south end uh, of the house, so you can see the layout. We do have a floor plan. I'll go to that next. So uh, for board members, uh, north would be to the left, so uh, the house, you can see the auto court. The two two-car garages and then this is the floor plan, the. The master suite is on the. Top of the sheet, which would be adjacent to the east property line, uh, kind of a great room. A bunch of bedrooms on the other side of the house, um, great room. Um, some other features, outdoor shower off the master bath. Please, I'm going to go back into presentation mode so that. I can zoom back in. Th- this is uh, the design of the home. Uh, the. Four elevations are on the right and then some of the detailing that I mentioned are on the images on the left. Here's a rendering and a perspective, you can see. Uh. The top left image is the, what would be the uh, view of the house from Bird Lane. The top right would be the backyard, kind of facing northwest, uh, looking towards the house off the golf course. The uh, second image on the left. Um, just a different perspective um, of what the the house might look like with landscaping. The next image to the right is a a pretty direct view of uh, the the rear of the home, which would be the south facade. And then uh, the next image on the left, the third one down, that's the auto court that I mentioned, it's showing. The two-car garage uh, that's would be on the west property line. The next image is like a drone view, if you will, from the golf course looking into the property. And then on the lower left, you get to see the second, uh, actually you can see both. Uh. Two-car garages along with a very uh, prominent front door. And then the final image is uh, aerial like a drone view, if you will, from Bird Lane, looking, looking down onto the property. Uh, as I mentioned, this is a last lot on Bird Lane. Uh, we feel that the design uh, provides a. A very opulent, um. Very appropriate design for this area would complement Bird Lane. The building materials are very stout. Um, we feel like it's a a really good project. All the development standards of the RE zoning district are being met. Again, we have the recommended motion and then the staff recommendation. We are recommending approval. Subject to the two stipulations. And there's a motion if uh, when you're ready for that.
It's elevated though from Bird Lane a bit, right? So you wanted to come and speak for the project? And most, most of them are elevated up a little bit.
My name is Damon Wake, um. Forty-five thirty-six North Tenth Avenue, Phoenix. I'm the architect uh, representing the owners of this project, um, and it does repeat your question.
I I was, the lot is elevated from Bird Lane a bit, right? I was just talking about the retention base and stuff and I'm. I was just curious why that was included on.
So it's not, um, it's not really elevated that much. There is some gentle slope, uh, about two feet, two and a half. Feet across the, from the front end to the back end, uh, towards the golf course of the high end. So there's a little elevation, um, and we have raised the house, the finished floor just a little bit to compensate. But it's only about uh, eighteen inches above.
Of the street.
Grade, yeah.
So is it the city's concerned that all that site, that the site would not. Hold its own rainwater and drain onto Bird Lane? Is that, was that the concern?
Chair uh, board members, so the stipulation two comes from our city engineer, so. A little bit of background on Bird Lane, which I I know most of you are very familiar with is historically, um. The the drainage flows from upstream, there have been flooding issues on Bird Lane. Uh, most recently further west, um, the speed humps have been modified. Um, to accommodate flows heading west on Bird Lane and then south. Um, as part of the Litchfield Square improvements. Um, last year, um, before I started with the city, uh, the city engineer is retired now. Got the, I finished the project, but he started the downtown storm drain project. Which was, is in Neolin Avenue, uh, east of the Wigwam. And then the uh. Uh. Drainage system and historic flows uh, all go down into. The new storm drain. There was also a project. I don't think the aerial photo will pick up on it. This goes back a couple of years, but there was a. Flooding situation south, this is. Uh, down off the map, um. That flooding situation, to my understanding, has been resolved with some, uh, it's in. Former board member, Romax Neighborhood, his neck of the woods, but. That drainage situation or flooding situation has been. Uh, addressed as well, so I think this is the stipulation, like I said, is coming from the city engineer and. He's a little sensitive to all things on Bird Lane.
The the flooding that I was always thinking about was further to the east. And up around the curb a little bit, where it usually settles. But any, at any rate. The retention, most residential, they're kind of required to keep your, keep your own rainwater on your own site. Has been always kind of the rule of thumb, so not really allowed to drain off into the street in any way.
And we have not uh, done the civil engineering of this prop- project yet, but we fully intend to. Comply with all retention requirements, which are pretty standard, as you noted.
Okay. Any other questions for the the staff or applicant?
Yeah, I had a question on, I couldn't, I'm not really clear on actually what setbacks are being. Um, observed, because I, there's mention of like thirty years, so I I can't, I can't read the plans and also fifteen, so it was curious about.
And actually, I wanted to clarify that too, because um, in some previous communications I had with uh, a a different person in the planning department, it was confirmed. Yes, that uh, there had been a previous zoning case on this property and the side yard setbacks had been reduced to fifteen feet. So the front yard and the rear yard is still forty feet, from my understanding, and the side yard is fifteen, and so the the proposal does comply with that.
It was that property better, it was a a close by property and then also like when the city incorporated. They overlaid a zoning matrix on existing properties that and a lot of them didn't comply, and I'm sure this was one that didn't comply.
Right.
Almost none of them have thirty-foot setbacks on the sides or. And in fact, I had my own house, I think it was something like seven. It was, it was really close.
Right.
So um, I think fifteen was more the standard.
Okay.
Um, it is what you just stick with.
In this case, though, where that house that was grandfathered has been scraped, do they now have to comply with?
I think because of the neighborhood and you're 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 overlaying an unfair disadvantage over. Every, every other property in that. District gets to enjoy the the other more lenient setbacks, so. And I, and I've always looked at it, it looks. Odd, if you know, if you were to squish the houses together, have, you know, sixty feet between each house, it would, you know, it would. Not be an enhancement to the neighborhood.
I will say, doing work in other municipalities in the valley, that for lots this size, fifteen-foot side yard is very common, so. For the, in terms of design, it makes for a very appropriate-sized house. Um, thirty feet is quite a lot. It makes for a very awkwardly long.
Yeah.
Shaped house.
Yeah, it boxes you in, so.
But also the the forty feet. Front yard setback pretty much lines with everybody else, so it conforms. My question is, on the east side. Because you've got the Wigwam access road right there. What do you?
That was on a different lot, yeah, yeah, but what's over there?
I thought.
That's one lot over.
That's one lot over.
At least one, at least, yeah.
All right, I was, I thought this one sat right next to it.
Yeah, no, there's one more lot in between.
When we uh, were running the mass in the house too, we, while the garages, the pop out of the garages actually are close to the forty-foot setback. The main part of the house is much further back, so it gives some relief to the street. So the the front door is over a hundred and uh, uh, over a hundred and ten feet, I believe, off the top of my head, from the curb. Uh, so it gives us opportunity to have the house have landscaping and trees and and not just feel like it's. A big block right at the front of the setback, so.
Okay. Also, nice design.
So, yeah, I mean, it looks real proportional and nice, but just due diligence, I don't, I don't see like an elevation that is dimensioned, so ridge height is, I'm sure, well below whatever the requirement is, but I just wanted to ask about it.
The current ridge, the current maximum height that you've got.
Yes, uh. And 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 if, yeah, these are uh. Renderings, of course, but the tallest ridge point is twenty-four foot uh, four. And something like three eights or something, uh, and that's measured from the middle ridge, which is the. The mass above the kitchen, the great room. Um, and that's measured above the lowest natural grade, based on a survey. Uh, and another two, I saw you noted that the uh, this lot is allowed thirty-five feet and two stories. And that's another item where um, we don't intend to raise the house, but in the previous communications I had with Daniel, it was noted that we had a limit of a twenty-five-foot height setback.
Yeah, I was curious about that too, because when I've done the other house on Bird Lane, it was not. There, it was not two-story allowed, but i- unless the the zoning has changed.
No, the zone chair, board members, so the zoning code, the way it's written is a little confusing if. I don't have the matrix, the zoning matrix with me or for a handout, but it it says something like. One building height is twenty-five to thirty-five feet, so the way I would read it is that a one-story is allowed twenty-five. Twenty-five feet in height and a two-story would be allowed thirty-five, thirty-five feet in height.
I thought that it said somewhere only one story.
Yeah, I think there's somewhere in there, it says one story on on the RE lots, but.
In any effect, we'll keep within one, below twenty-five feet.
That's what we want here.
Thanks.
Um, I wanted to ask also, you're showing kind of view fencing, just because it's on the Wigwam, I just wanted to kind of address that. Um, as part of this package, if I'm assuming that that's part of what we're approving, so.
Yeah, it, view fencing is required along the Wigwam.
Right, that's my understanding, right, is that some level of view fencing is required and that was uh, um. Even though the landscape is not one hundred percent complete, we do intend to have view fencing on that, on that side of the property. The, we, there's a um, existing uh, combination solid wall and view fence on the. Uh, west side of the property, that is to remain, and then um, uh, we may have some extension to. Uh, a six-foot site wall on the east uh, side, where there's not one between the the property and the existing property.
So that will be. Reviewed by building safety or.
We would review that at the final plan stage.
Okay. All right, any other questions? No? Want to make a motion?
Yes, Jane.
Okay.
We're going around the line here.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I remember. Concerning uh. Concerning, let's see here, item D, which involves a new, new house at four thirteen East Bird Lane. I move, we have, we approved. Uh, and along with the, with the understanding that as to two stipulations that the engineers are on. One being fire sprinklers, whether being water retention. Um, and with with that, I move that we approve.
Okay, you have a motion? I'll second it, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
How, how long? How long?
You know, I can say that.
Good architect, hello.
Uh, how long have I been a good architect?
No, no, no. They, now that we've approved this. Year and a half, two years, two and a half.
Uh, we're not quite sure yet. We have to finish construction documents and then uh, pricing and and all that stuff, but I will conservatively say uh. Probably two years before we've been, maybe less.
Just depends on.
Depends on the contract. Thank you. Oh, yeah. All right, moving on, a staff report on current events.
Yeah, a few things, Chair. I'm, I've got two guests that are helping me tonight, so do you want to introduce yourselves? Yeah, a few things, Chair, I'm, I've got two guests that are helping me tonight, so do you want to introduce yourselves? Who are you?
Why was her last time?
So. I met Maria last time.
She's the deputy city clerk in the city clerk's office.
Rena, um, the department officer, but I recently accepted a position as John's assistant, so. We hear.
Okay.
Rena is gonna be, she's been with the city for a couple of years, she's gonna be, in addition to code compliance. Um, she's gonna be helping planning with uh like attending these meetings. Uh, we've got her doing some work on some P and Z matters, uh, P and Z commissions, so you'll be seeing Rena around. As well.
Great, nice to meet you.
Um, a couple of other things, so like on the technology side, I I saw um Rachel looking at a device. The city clerk has asked me um to ask you. If you would be interested in a uh city-issued uh Surface Pro. It's a ta- basically, it's a tablet, and the idea is that rather than. Like I'm old-school, I bring paper and pens and pencils, we would uh. If we secured the Surface Pro devices, we would load those with all the materials that are on your agenda. We would, as part of the room setup, we would bring, you wouldn't have to take them home. We would bring the Surface Pros.
It would be handy to be able to zoom in.
Yeah, loaded with the materials and then. Exactly to your point, Chair, if you wanted to, if something sparked your interest, you could zoom in on the Surface Pro. Uh, we'll still have this stuff up on the screen, but if if that's something that you're interested in. Uh, we're looking at securing those, what would happen logistically then is. As part of the room setup, it occurs about an hour or two before the meeting starts. The Surface Pros will be here, ready for you. Uh, use them as you wish, um, when the meeting's done, we would shut them off and basically take them back to the office. And you wouldn't need to worry about downloading. The materials or taking, remembering to bring the Surface Pro rack. Is that my describing kind of the the process, so that's what we're looking at, if that's something that.
Does it, I've been, like, I would bring my iPad too, just because sometimes I'm, I've got two pairs of glasses. With a taper and re support. And uh.
Yeah.
Uh, if I tried to bring it up on my phone, I just can't see it, so.
Yeah.
Now, did I, did I hear correctly that we would be looking at it individually?
Correct, you would have your own.
Okay, so somebody like me, who is kind of a computer dinosaur. We don't want me being able to hit a button that suddenly. Everything else, but I think. If if these devices are dinosaur-proof. People like me, where it will be easy for me to use it, I think it would be helpful.
If it's just preloaded with the agenda packet, then you can just.
Yeah.
Flip through it with your finger and.
Yeah.
Zoom in, imagining that it's touchscreen, like an iPad, so then.
Yeah, some of you are on board of adjustment and P and Z commission, I'll be asking them. The same question when we meet next, but that's what we're looking at, um. Securing the devices and um, maybe make things a little bit easier for everybody.
I agree.
And we see somebody shaking their head in the back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Very affirmatively.
It will make your life a lot easier.
Yeah.
I agree.
But we're still sending out the notice of the meeting.
Yeah, we can start, because I like to look at it, you know, a a day or two at a time, so I get time to go out and drive. To look at something if it's intriguing me or I have questions.
Everything like now is still the same. Um, it it will just only be for in-meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.
Then you don't have to bring the.
That's, that would be good.
I agree.
Okay, so we'll uh, we'll explore that further with our budget uh folks and our IT folks. As well and and uh see if we can make that happen.
Any other current events?
So when we're doing this, when when we're ready to go.
Yes.
Just as a suggestion, I don't know whether we would want to do individual coaching or just set a meeting that instead of starting at six, started at. Five-thirty or something, just to go over how it.
Yeah.
How it works, rather than.
We can do that.
Or we could have a separate meeting, but I think most people would.
Yeah, we can work out the those logistics once we have the tablets.
Sure.
There won't be a written test.
Any other current events for the city, for staff?
No.
Do any board members have any current events?
Well, what's happening over at the uh stadium this weekend?
Oh, five.
That's, that's the big events. Final four.
And then, welcome, I guess this is my first meeting.
What?
Was added on before.
Did have you replaced Brian, has he replaced Brian O'Connor or?
Don't I look like Brian?
He, he couldn't get out fast enough. He's, he's good, he just. Went turn around and said, well, you haven't been on it yet. Because I used to come to the meetings on a regular basis anyway.
Welcome.
Oh, as I should have mentioned that at the beginning of the meeting, so Brian O'Connor, his term was up, and he had talked to me a couple of months ago about. As Commissioner Andari said, he's got a lot on his plate, he's still on planning zoning commission, but he. Wanted to take a step back from DRB, so. We're lucky enough to have Commissioner, P and Z Commissioner Andari to be also on the DRB.
Okay. Great. Okay, uh, would someone like to me, if there's no other current events from the board members?
Uh, before we do that, I I am anticipating, um, we will have a May. DRB meeting, May second.
Okay.
At six PM in this room, I'm already working on the agenda. Uh, we already got at least two items that are gonna be on that agenda, so uh, we we will be having a meeting next month.
Okay. Well, motion to Chair? I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.